Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action of items, holds public hearings, and conducts other businesses, business of the city. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Three requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to the meetings until the Washington State restrictions are lifted. As published in the Agenda Packet and on the website, tonight's meeting will be held remotely with no in-person attendance from the public. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at Please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, individuals who did not sign up to speak through GoToWebinar may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. With that, I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Mayor Martinez is out this evening. And with that, I would like to invite you all to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we would like to move forward with the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call, vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, an item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular Agenda, considered separately. First item, Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes to approve the minutes of Pasco City Council Meeting held on March 15, 2021, and workshop held on March 22, 2021. Item B, Bills and Communications, to approve claims in the total amount of $5,147,476.00. Item C, Ordinance PMC Amendment related to the size averaging to adopt ordinance number 4522 relating to lot size averaging and amending Section 21.10.020, Terms Defined, and creating Section 21.20.070, Lot Size Averaging of the Pasco Municipal Code and further authorized publication by summary only. Item D, Tourism Promotion Area Reserve Fund Request to promote, sorry, to approve the 2021 Special Project Expenditures for Tourism Promotion Area in the amount of $345,250 to be funded from the TPA Reserve Balance. Item E, Downtown Pasco Development Board Appointment to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Gloria Tapia to position number six on the Downtown Pasco Development Authority Board with the term effective December 20, 2020 to December 20, 2022. And lastly, approve Downtown Pasco Development Authority 2021 Funding Agreement to approve the 2021 Funding Agreement with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. For this evening, Councilmember Maloney will be my assistant. And Councilmember Maloney, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
And can I get a roll call, please?
Let me second on that, I think.
This is Alvarado, I'll second.
Thank you, that was segmented by Councilmember Alvarado. And with that, now can I get a roll call?
And Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes. And the motion carries unanimously. Now we will move to Item Five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. We have none. Item Six, Visitors and Other Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the or for posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by the council over time and after a deliberate process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes by the mayor and will be up to consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. We have no visitors, so we will move forward with Item Seven. Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Are any council members that wish to report on any of their weekly events?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. I just wanted to report that today I signed in as other for the Senate Bill Hearing for Senate Bill 5476 at the request of our city manager. This is a bill that, you know, has a lot of nuance and it has to do with the decriminalization of drugs. But the position that, from a city perspective, because we have not had a conversation as a council of what our position would be, it was more of an other having to do with more nuances related to the services that would be required by this bill and the immediacy of the services and the strain that that could put on our police force. So I wanted to report that to council. I'll be available if you have more questions about it and also to me or city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Any other comments? And it sounds like we do not have anymore, so we will move forward.
This is Councilmember Roach. I'm sorry, I saw Councilmember Milney put on his video, so I thought he was gonna say something. I have one thing to report. Michael Nabakovich and I met this last week. Visit TriCities has their annual, excuse me, not annual, but this summer they're planning their strategic planning retreat. And so as an on-ramp for that, we spent some time one-on-one discussing, you know, ways that the City of Pasco can make a continued partnership with Visit TriCities and vice versa. So knowing that, just wanna, you know, elicit some additional feedback from council members that, you know, I would be happy to relay that to the Visit TriCities staff as we head into the summer for that strategic planning. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Roach. And do we have anyone else wishing to report? And it sounds like we don't. So moving on to Section Eight, Hearings and Council Action on Ordinances and Resolutions Relating There Too. We don't have any listed. Moving on to Item Nine, Ordinances and Resolutions Not Relating to Hearings. And we do have Item A, Ordinance Budget Adjustment for Land Purchase. Do we have Director Sigdel available?
Yes, evening, Mayor Protem Barajas, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, and council members, this is an action item that was presented to council in a form of a professional services agreement a couple of weeks ago, and this is a continuation of that action. Legally, we do need a separate budget ordinance passed by council. And if you remember, this is a relatively new process for us, as in coming to you on a regular basis rather than at the year-end for budget adjustments as council makes action or takes actions that were not adopted budget items. So the land purchase was not budgeted as we had presented during that PSA presentation. And so we're essentially asking for a budget adjustment to be made for the purchase price of the land.
Okay, do we have any comments from any of our council members? Any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Ms. Mayor Protem, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4523, amending the 2021 and 2022 biennial operation budget of the City of Pasco, Washington, providing supplement here thereto, and to provide additional appropriation in the city's utility fund for the purchase of land to build sanitary sewer infrastructure and further authorized publication by summary only.
There's a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 4523, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Serrano.
Thank you, we have a motion and seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor, sorry, yes, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose, say nay. And motion number 4523 was approved unanimously. And do we get a roll call? No roll call, okay, thank you. With that, we move forward to Item B, Ordinance Malhand Rezone C1 to R4. And it sounds like we have Director White for this item.
We do, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This proposed rezone is on the northeast corner of Argent and Road 68. It contains roughly two and a half acres. Currently, it's zoned C1, our normal retail zoning district. The proposal is to change the C1 zoning designation to R4, high-density residential. The conformance of the proposed rezone meets our comprehensive plan designation, which establishes a mixed residential and commercial designation offering a wide variety of land uses. The Pasco Hearing Examiner held a public hearing on March 10th for this proposal and has recommended to council approval of the proposed rezone.
Thank you for that, Director White. Do we have any questions or comments from council members to staff?
This is Councilmember Maloney, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. Mr. White, if I understood correctly, there were some comments about potentially that this, the impact this may have on traffic. And the process forward after a rezone would be before the building could be built, that there'd have to be a traffic analysis and such, if, as necessary, to mitigate any potential traffic impacts. Do I have that correct?
Yes, you do. Is that, sorry, Mr. Maloney, it's a, it's a, of course, we can't analyze yet because it's only, it's not a project yet. At the project stage, a trafficked impact analysis will be conducted to identify the appropriate measures for mitigation subject to the design of the site itself.
Great, thank you, Mr. White, that's all I have.
Any other comments from council members? Okay. Sorry, was that a yes? Sounds like no. Okay.
Sorry, this is Serrano, I do, this technology sucks. I have a couple of questions. Flipping through the packet, I see there's kind of a parting statement that I'm curious if it was unintended or an oversight. It's the first last page, on page two of three on the hearing, Officer's Recommendation under Conclusion 2B, that's two Bravo, and it says, "The effect of the proposal on the immediate vicinity will be materially detrimental." Is that supposed to be? I guess I'm perplexed there that we're claiming that this is not problematic, yet it's materially detrimental to the immediate vicinity. Director White, can you walk me through how that finding's made and whether or not we're gonna have a way to overcome that?
I, in all certainty, Councilmember Serrano, that is a typographical error.
Okay, that's what I was hoping I would hear because it seemed to essentially contradict the other 29 and whatever pages. The other question I have is, is the representative of the Hanson Family Dental wrote about what, like a two-sentence, one-sentence opposition letter, which was simply, "Application number, we are writing to object to proposal." Now, I would suspect if they had oral comment during the hearing, we would have seen that, and I didn't see any indication. Have we received any further questions, statement, et cetera, from Hanson Family indicating what their objection is?
We have not, and if I'm not mistaken, we actually reached out to the commenter on that, in that regard, and have not received a response.
Okay, well, I greatly appreciate that because, you know, at the end, this is an opportunity for us to kind of essentially reclaim a lot of, you know, high-impact land, if you will, as we're looking at our planning and strategic measures. So I think this is great, but, you know, when I see those types of statements and those types of letters, I get a little bit concerned. But if, if we're not receiving responses and you're telling me we got a typographical error on page 28 in the PDF, then my concerns are alleviated. So thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Are there any other comments or questions from council members? Okay, it sounds like there is no other comments. And can I get a motion on this item?
As Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4524, rezoning a parcel located at the northeast corner of West Argent Road and Road 68 from C1 to R4, and further authorized publication by summary only.
This is Alvarado, I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve ordinance number 4524, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any oppose, say nay. And the motion carries unanimously. We move forward with Item C, Resolution Revised Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company, BNSF, Overpass Agreement for Lewis Street Overpass. And it looks like we have Director Worley with some additional comments.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Barajas, can you hear me okay?
We can, good evening.
Good evening and good evening, council members. We are bringing before you once again an agreement with the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad related to the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Now, council may remember this agreement. We brought it to council back in August of last year, and the council approved a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this overpass agreement. Unfortunately, when we sent it to BNSF for execution, it came back to us revised with some additional requirements that the BNSF wanted as part of this agreement. And those new added requirements will have a cost impact to the city. I mentioned this at the council meeting previously where we awarded the bid of the project, and the requirement that the railroad added to this project was to remove the existing underpass to at least six feet below existing grade. That was not anticipated originally. The bid plans and specifications were revised slightly to accommodate this, but the project currently does not include this additional work. So because of the way the project is bid, we will have to work with the contractor to determine a sequence of how to continue to allow the BNSF to operate the railroad yard while demolishing the underpass at the same time. So there is more work to be done for this. But BNSF has asked to put this in the agreement. They've estimated the cost that they will have to provide in order to do the sequencing for this additional work. And so they've estimated it, they put it in the agreement, and that is what is before you tonight. This overpass agreement represents the very last right-of-way document that's needed in order for WashDOT to certify the right-of-way phase of the Lewis Street Overpass Project. And as of right now, council awarded the bid for this project to the contractor Cascade Bridge Company, but we are not able to issue a notice to proceed to start construction on that project until WashDOT certifies the right-of-way. And this agreement is the last thing to complete. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this agreement.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council members?
This is Councilwoman Maloney.
Go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Mr. Worley, so obviously, this has been a frustrating process, and I admire your and staff's patience on, I'm sure not becoming too frustrated and expressing your frustrations with these constant changes and in cost increases. If this was any other project where we were looking at it and we had such difficulties, I would be pretty reticent to move forward. But with this, the project of this size and scale, with this long on the planning, with so much funding invested already and to be invested, I just can't imagine us doing, going a different direction. There is no other direction to go, we need to, we need to move forward. So at this time, Mr. Worley, do you anticipate any further potential complications? I mean, this overall scheme of things, this is a, this is a significant change, but not a major change. But is there any, any other further comments you'd like to mention as to whether we're done? Are we?
I, I'll add a few comments. One is, I believe we're done. We have been working with the railroad ever since we sent them the agreement. It has taken a while to get through their process, which has been frustrating, but they have been willing to work with us, even though they have as big a process to go through as we do in order to get approval. So they're ready to go, we're ready to go. And if, if this agreement is approved, I think they are in a position to be able to send over the agreement fairly quickly and have the city manager execute it. And to let council know that the added cost for this extra work by Burlington Northern, again, is estimated, we will actually only pay for actual costs. And in my experience in dealing with the railroads on previous projects throughout the state, they do tend to estimate high. So that's a good thing. Not only that, we do have contingency money built into the project budget. And so we estimated a little extra on the railroad right-of-way work. Some of that extra covers this additional cost, but we also have a 5% contingency built into the construction phase of this project. Obviously, we don't like to spend it right up front before we get into contingency, but at least it's there. And so we're feeling good about that. The third thing I would mention is that we are currently working on the potential for another way around having to do this project as part of the Lewis Street Overpass. There is a potential we might be able to get some funding for some additional railroad work related to some of the federal money that may be coming to the railroads or to the city. And so staff and city manager are constantly working on ways to identify opportunities to be able to keep this project on time and on budget.
Perfect.
Appreciate the extra insight, Director Worley, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Sounds like there are none. Councilwoman Maloney, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, happily. I move to approve Resolution Number 4027, authorizing execution of the revised overpass agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company, BNSF, for the Lewis Street Overpass and further authorize the city manager to make minor substantive adjustments and to execute all other documents related to the BNSF right-of-way and this project.
There's a motion to approve and adopt, do I have a second?
This is Councilman Milney, I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and seconded by Councilmember Mil. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose, say nay. Thank you, the motion for Resolution Number 4027 passes unanimously. We move forward with Item D, Resolution PSA with CKJT Architects, PLLC, for Animal Shelter Facility Architectural Services. Now we have Director Ratkey with a presentation.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the city council. Good evening, Zach Ratkey, ACS Director. As we reported a couple of weeks ago, we are moving forward with the Regional Animal Shelter Facility, and this is a big, significant first step in securing our design and architectural services. A request for proposals for design services was issued on February 25th. With the project or the proposal period closing on March 12th, we received eight proposals. Based on a thorough committee review and scoring of the statements of qualifications, CKJT Architects out of Kennewick was determined to be the best qualified potential or best to qualify to provide architectural and engineering services for the project. This proposed PSA or Professional Services Agreement with CKJT Architects will provide architectural services for the design phase of the Regional Animal Shelter and also support the efforts of city staff through the bidding process, through construction, and project closeout as well. Architectural services and design support, as I just stated, are expected to commence after, you know, as soon as tomorrow after execution, should this be successfully executed by council this evening, and expected to be completed or run through October of 2022. So looking through some of the financials of this, the total design services project is $457,785. This project, as you know, is funded through a one-third share between the cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland. Pasco's portion is funded through a bond that we have for this project in its entirety. And the one-third share to each city amounts to a direct budget approach, a direct budget impact of $152,595 to the City of Pasco. That's pretty much our presentation this evening for the Design Services Professional Services Agreement, and I'm here to take any questions of council.
Thank you for that, Director Zach Ratkey.
Thank you.
Ratkey. Do we have any comments? Do we have any comments or questions from any of our council members? Are there any comments or questions from council members? Sounds like there's no comments. Uh, Councilman Maloney, do I have a motion for this, please?
Yes, uh, ha- happy to. Um, I move to approve resolution number four zero two eight. Authorizing the city manager to sign and execute a professional services agreement with CKJT Architects, P L L C. For architectural services related to the new animal shelter facility in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and zero cents.
Thank you for that. Do I have a second?
This is council member Roach and I'll second that.
Thank you, uh, for that. We have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Roach. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Thank you for that. Motion, uh, for resolution number four zero two eight passes, uh, unanimously. Moving on to item E, resolution bid res- uh, rejection and rebid project. For wastewater treatment plant improvements phase one. And we go back with Director Worley.
Good evening again, Mayor Protem Barajas and council members. As you may recall, uh, a formal request for a bid submittal. For the wastewater treatment plant improvements phase one project was issued on January twelfth of this year. Three bids were received and opened on March third. After very careful review, the city has determined that none of the bids are in the city's best interest to award. Based on that, the staff requests city council approval. Of the proposed resolution rejecting all bids for the wastewater treatment plan improvement phase one project. And authorize the city manager to issue a new call for bids at a later date. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from any of the council members? Sounds like there are none. Uh, Councilman Maloney, can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to approve resolution number four zero four five rejecting all bids received for bid number one nine zero seven two. The wastewater treatment plant improvements phase one project. And further authorize the city manager to call for bids in the same manner as the original call for this project.
Thank you for that. There's a motion and can I get a second?
This is council member Roach and I'll second it.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Roach. There's a motion and a second by Councilwoman Roach. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, motion number four zero four five, um. Pass unanimously. And from that, we move on to item ten, unfinished business. Looks like we have none. And item eleven, new business. We have one item, uh, Basin Disposal Incorporated Recycling Update. And. Who do we have online for this item?
We have, uh, Rebecca Francic and Derek Dietrich from BDI.
Ms. Francic, are you online?
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, this is. Thank you, Madam Protem. Uh, so good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Rebecca Francic. I am representing Basin Disposal. Our address is twenty twenty-one. North Commercial Avenue, Pasco, Washington, and it is our pleasure to join you. In keeping Pasco healthy and clean through the proper disposal of garbage. And for my narrator, as we go through, I'll just say slide, but I need you to change the slides. So, slide two. Tonight, I would like to share with you, uh, the current state of recycling. I want to discuss Pasco's growth and future plans to accommodate that growth and. Pasco's desire to absorb the road forty-eight, sixty-four and McLaughlin Recycling Centers. Slide. The benefits of proactive ongoing joint planning with Franklin County via their solid waste advisory committee, otherwise known as SWAC. And by the way, I want to congratulate you on. Putting out a lease for the animal shelter, getting the Lewis Street overpass almost on its way and the new lease with Costco. It is so exciting. To see those things actually coming to fruition.
Thank you.
Slide. Currently Franklin County has two recycling programs in place. One is supported by Franklin County and another is supported by the city of Pasco. Over the years, as Pasco has grown, it has annexed the county areas. So recycling locations that were once supported by Franklin County are now located inside Pasco's city limits. Slide. Basin would like to ask the city of Pasco if you would formally transition three locations and they are marked by the blue stars. Road forty-eight at the soccer field, road sixty-four at the Grange Hall and McLaughlin Middle School. From the Franklin County program and put them into Pasco's recycling program. Slide. I'm sure that you were wondering what this is going to cost. That would have been one of my first questions. And so this graph shows where your current recycling locations are. You can see there at Octave Griggs. The Community Unitarian Church, Virgie Robinson and Natchoa. And then in highlighted in yellow, you can see the three locations we're asking you to absorb. And the cost, uh, for all of these locations together is about forty cents per household per month. To cover recycling in Pasco. Slide. This slide is going to show a brief overview of how your garbage bill is calculated. I'm not going to address this in depth tonight, but I do want to point out, especially if you look at the top of capsule. That it is constructed so that you can decide what recycling commodities you want to collect and those you do not. The value of this model is it allows you, the city council, to change how and when you run your recycling program. In response to market conditions. Slide. Which brings us to several very important items. The public must understand this about recycling in order to make informed decisions. First. Garbage is predictable. It's stable. The price of putting garbage in the landfill changes very slowly over time with predictable annual increases in the consumer price index. Landfill fees and transfer station fees. Basin's prices to haul your garbage are regulated by the state. If Basin needs to raise rates, we first have to apply to the state to do a rate increase review. Recycling, on the other hand, is another animal. It is volatile. The price of commodities such as plastic, glass, metals, aluminum and paper go up. And they go down. If you run a recycling program for plastic, you must be cognizant that your market can disappear overnight. As Americas did when China decided they no longer needed our plastics. So carefully structuring your recycling collection system is key. To financially weathering these unpredictable markets. Slide. So, when should we recycle? Well, recycling works best when there is a market for the recycled goods. That actually turns them into something else. Recycling works when it is profitable to recover them. And when these conditions exist, we frequently see the private market move in. So two local examples would be Twin City Metals who collects metals in the Tri-City area and Ray Poland who recycles concrete. As much as we want to recycle plastics, we have no market at this time. Water bottles, which are technically recyclable, are more expensive to recycle than it is to use virgin PET product. Furthermore, the recycled product is inferior to the virgin product. So if you're a business. And you're looking at virgin product, which is higher quality and it's significantly cheaper than recycled product. Which is inferior, which choice are you going to make? And then sadly, plastics three through seven, I know they have those nice little stamps on them, but they cannot be recycled at all. For those of you who find this as dispiriting as I do, I highly encourage you to have your children study material science or chemistry. The person who finally cracks the breakdown of pla- plastics into safe environmental components. Will be far richer than Bill Gates and may possibly save the planet. Slide. So this brings us to products that can be recycled. Currently cardboard, mixed paper and aluminum cans. There are two ways to collect them. The most affordable option is a centrally located recycling center and that's what we're asking you to absorb tonight. The advantage of this option is it can quickly adapt to market conditions. The disadvantage is people have to haul their recycling and for those who are over ambitious or misinformed. They might mix non-recycled items in with the recycled items, which causes contamination. This means that the garbage and the recycling are taken together to a processing facility. They're sorted at a much more expensive rate. And would have occurred if the garbage portion had been put directly into the landfill. Slide. Option two, of the frequently asked for curbside recycling is more expensive than a central location. But it provides the customer with more convenience. It is less likely to lead to contamination, but it is significantly more expensive. Because you need specialized trucks, specialized containers and facilities built to process. The recycling that you take in. If market conditions change and you have purchased a new facility, new trucks and new, um. Bins, you're still paying for equipment in a processing facility that may no longer be economically viable. Slide. So this brings us to my request tonight. Does Pasco want to take on the recycling centers at road forty-eight, sixty-four and McLaughlin Middle School? If not, how would you like to notify the public of their closure? Before you begin your deliberations and I take your questions. I would like to draw your attention to several other things that should be on your planning horizon. Slide. Should Pasco be considering more recycling facilities north of Argent, perhaps at Geesa Stadium? The county currently has the ability to appoint members to a solid waste advisory committee, also known as SWAC. This committee engages with ecology and sets long-term goals for waste and recycling disposal. Without the active engagement of this committee, it is difficult to develop long-term plans for new recycling facilities. And transfer stations. Given the consistent growth that Pasco has seen, long-term planning is important both by the city and your partners. Believe me, this has to be done well before houses go in because no one wants a garbage facility. In their neighborhood or their industrial park or their shopping development. And yet, the correct disposal of garbage is a critical health function for our community. Lastly, Pasco city codes require the building of garbage enclosures that cannot be used. Because they don't accommodate garbage trucks or in the case of Starbucks on road sixty-eight. They block the drive-through lane when they are trying to dump them. Are you, as a council, interested in adopting garbage enclosure standards? That allow garbage trucks to function more safely and efficiently, ultimately keeping your costs down. Thank you, slides. So much for your time tonight. I look forward to your discussion. Questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Francic. Do we have any questions or comments from any of the council members?
This is, uh, Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
And, uh, good evening, Ms. Francic. Always, uh, good to hear your, uh, your friendly voice. My, uh, question, my question is, uh, do we know how well these, uh, sites are used? If they're being used to their potential or overused or well-underused?
I cannot speak to the ones at Virgie Robinson and the Unitarian Church, but I will tell you that the one on, um, sixty-four. Probably accounts for the majority of the recycling that happens in Pasco. It is full all the time and the one on forty-eight is used quite consistently as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that, that, that'll probably be important information to, uh, to, to us as we make a decision to absorb them. Perhaps this might not be.
Well, I, um, I believe Derek Dietrich is online with us and he may have more information on the. Uh, recycling centers that are on the farther east side. So, uh, Mr. Dietrich, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, uh, this is Derek Dietrich and, uh, Councilman Alvarado to address your question. And I don't know what slide number it is, but the slide that has the annual cost per location.
Five. Slide five.
There we go. So the three contain, the three locations that we're talking about are the three highest used locations. And so this cost estimate, it's not so much an estimate, it actually is the cost. Um, obviously, the more usage, the more hauls and the more commodity is ran through each of those locations. And so they, uh, comprise the vast majority of recycling in our community.
Thank you. Now, this is a question for, uh, uh, for BDI or for, uh, overstaff, um. Um, just if there's any backstory why the county decided that this was no longer, uh, part of their, um, responsibility?
Well, I think they have, um, you know, their budgets are tight just like ours. And these are now within the city. And so. Their position would be, shouldn't the city be taking care of them?
Councilmember, this is, Councilmember Alvarado, this is, uh, Adam Lincoln. Um, I just wanted to add that. We are, uh, attempting to reach out to the county to, um, chat with them a little bit further about the. Um, their decision and the, the cost of these sites. So as soon as we can get some more information there, we'll, we'll make sure that the rest of the. Council is informed as to what we can learn.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. I, I think that, that's part of our due diligence. I appreciate that.
Great. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Mayor Protem.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Madam.
Yes, if I, if I could, I, uh, the issue of, uh, can enclosure. Standards, uh, has come up and, uh, I know Director White's still on, on the, uh. Webinar. I'd, I'd like to ask, uh. Uh, Director White to address that issue. I, I know those are inner standards. Now I think we are dealing with. Historical, uh, placements of containers that have been problematic for. Uh, drivers of these large trucks and as the trucks have gotten bigger, it only becomes more complicated, but. Uh, Director White, if you could fill us in a little bit?
Uh, thank you, S- um, City Manager, uh, Dave Zabel. Um, the, um. Enclosures are not codified, so, uh, we leave it up to the applicants for permits and project permits. To coordinate with BDI on enclosures. Um, it's very much the same as we leave it to applicants to coordinate with the Public Utility District for Electricity. Or for, uh, them to coordinate with the Natural Gas Company for gas service. Um, certainly, um, it's not perhaps advantageous to add ten, twelve, fourteen or so pages. To codified standards, recognizing that there will be circumstances. That will require, um, adjustments or at least, uh. Uh, you know, on, on the ground, um. Decisions regarding, uh, how to apply those standards. We would still recommend that. Applicants for projects go through BDI for those kinds of, uh. Accommodations. However, it is very common in other communities, uh, one that I used to work in. And one, uh, on the other side across the river, that, uh, we have handouts. That advise them of the proper enclosure standards and what they need to consider when they lay out their sites. And my experience has been that it's preferable from a, um. Administration standpoint. It's easier. It's much more quickly accomplished. And, uh, we don't have to wait and neither does BDI. Uh, on the, uh, results of any specific analysis. So, um, what I would appreciate. And I think the development community would also is a very specific list of best practices. To apply through the project review process that we here at the city conduct. You know, dozens of times a day. That would be very helpful as opposed to creating a new code. That requires administration, variances and, uh, a possible, um, appeal process.
Mr. White, could I just clarify, um, this is Rebecca Francic again. Are the people that are doing the building of these areas required to talk with BDI? Are the people that are doing the building of these areas required to talk with BDI? Or is it just a suggestion that they may want to?
They are not required as of yet. They, and again, as with Public Utility District Service for Electricity, Natural Gas, et cetera, we kind of leave it up to the applicant to handle their own business. And if the Public Utility District or the Gas Company suggests this is required or that is required, then we kind of take a hands-off approach and say, "Have at it, applicant. It is your project. You accommodate it."
Do you have any suggestions on how we could get in front of those applicants before their planning process gets too far down the road?
Before their planning process gets too far down the road? Yes, I think that if we have very succinct handouts about what is required and obviously a number to call for things that don't seem to fit the model, I think that would be very helpful and we can put that in with our handouts, with our development standards. And our building department and our engineering department can be very proactive in at least getting that information out. It doesn't guarantee that the design's going to be returned perfectly, but at least the information's out there for review and applicability by the site designer or site architect.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Director White. Any other comments or questions from the council members?
Yes, Councilman Serrano.
Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. I'd just like to know if we actually successfully recycle these products. I know Derek, you've spoken several times before us, several times before us. And, you know, as Mrs. Francic indicated, recycling is heavily market-driven and we kind of fluctuated. So do these end up in the dump or do they actually go and get recycled?
Councilmember Serrano, Derek Dietrich here. I'll answer that question. The answer is yes, they do get recycled. One of the goals that I'm seeking is more engagement with the program. Recycling is volatile. Price goes up, price goes down. And to have a mechanism in place to where we can present to city that maybe commodity X, Y, and Z are no longer viable. That way, we're adjusting the program to the market conditions. I think that's a better-informed way to do it and then gives the control to the city as where it should be.
Yeah, Mr. Dietrich, I really appreciate that approach. I'll speak for myself, not for council, but I think that would be a wise way to approach this issue because as you mentioned, it's, I mean, it seems like every presentation we hear that word volatile. And we recognize there's a needed balance between preserving, you know, and recycling, reducing, and reusing. That said, in a place where we have an economic crisis, you know, albeit forty cents a month is not much. You know, it's a tough pill to swallow to ask for more money from our constituents. So I think insofar as currently, we have value in this recycling. You know, it's not a heavy ask. It's just shy of five dollars a year. And again, it goes to, if you will, a good cause because these are actually being recycled. Maybe if the tea leaves change and the products are going directly to your disposal, we may want to revisit that. So that continued conversation would be very helpful. And I'd just like to kind of echo Director White's sentiments. To the extent that some of these targets for moving for these bins on the new builds is kind of a moving target, you know, to the extent that the council can be of help, I certainly offer my assistance. Again, I don't want to speak for council, but, you know, let's right-size these things so that we're building to our needs, not to what a code that may not be applicable is. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Serrano. Any other council members that would like to weigh in?
Yes, this is Councilman Meloni. And I was curious, I use, of course, the facility on sixty-four all the time. And I know a lot of times it's overflowing with cardboard. My question is, how, what's the timeframe and when is the county wanting to stop doing this? How long do we have to decide on what option we're going to go for?
They are done now. Their budget is pretty much expended for the year.
Well, that's quick. Okay. Thank you.
Well, and it's why frankly, we wanted to come before you. We didn't want to just say, "Okay, there's no more money. It's done." We wanted to see where council was and treat you like the partners you are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd definitely like to see the one on sixty-four. I mean, I'll keep open because, again, I use it every week and I just hate to not have it. It is quite the resource for Pasco and I wish we'd actually do more recycling. It's frustrating that there's not glass and, as you said, plastic, but I do understand the market constraints. So thank you for this good presentation.
This is Councilmember Roach and I just have a clarifying question. Over the years, I've used different sites throughout the city. At McLaughlin Middle School, on the Road sixty-four one, Maya Angelou Delta High School. And so, just curious, are those sites that have, you know, some of those still have a recycling center there, like the sixty-four, Road sixty-four location? But, for example, Delta High School and Maya Angelou Elementary no longer have a site there. Is that due to lack of use? Or do you periodically change locations based on usage? Or what's the reason for that?
What did you fault to Mr. Dietrich?
Yeah, Councilmember Roach, Derek Dietrich here. Two examples. One would be the property owner, for their own purposes, would request the container to leave. So that's occurred a number of times over the years. And in a couple instances, there would be excessive pollution at that container, you know. Garbage literally would show up around it or in it. And if we couldn't resolve that problem, then we would remove that container. So pretty much those are the two reasons why containers would no longer be in service.
Thank you for answering that. And just to follow up, do you find that, since you're in the business, these recycling centers, wherever they're at, do they get used to capacity?
Location matters, right? So back to that graph, where the three containers, where the three locations we're talking about, they get the most usage and some of the other locations have minimal usage. That's, I guess that's our experience over time. And we mail out a newsletter and we've tried other tactics, but it's just very location-specific as to where the usage is. And then with that, if I can then tee up kind of a bigger persistent issue. From my point of view, the program that we have is the chosen program. In the past, many times, council has decided not to do a curbside collection program. And so if our program is, and I call them neighborhood recycling centers, if that is the program, then I think it behooves us to support that program. And what I mean by that is, as Pasco grows and does planning, to have consideration for these locations to grow with the community. Because I have little down my mind that if they were located in the new neighborhoods, the usage pattern would be very similar to what we experienced on these three containers. And candidly, it would take pressure off of these three containers so there's a better user experience by everybody.
Thank you. And just as a, as a single person, a single resident in the community and a data point, I feel like I hear this frequently from people as frequent, well, I think it's a second runner-up to, you know, the traffic in my neighborhood kind of lament. But when are we going to get, "curbside recycling" is a frequent question. And so, you know, and I often talk about what you, Rebecca, presented on, the cost of recycling and there being no market for it. So I really appreciate the presentation. I just feel so happy to hear your voice, Rebecca. It's really nice to wish I could see you in person. But I think I'll make room for other council members if they have questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
This is Councilmember Maloney. If, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Portem. So I'll just, I guess I'll start with my comment of, it is extraordinarily disappointing to hear that we're talking about making a fairly large change to our budget. And, you know, that directly affects our taxpayers with the message that the money's gone. The county has made the decision to close these because they're unwilling to fund them any further. That is extraordinarily difficult to hear and I'm disappointed to hear that there, that this wasn't brought to our attention earlier. I think having some time to deliberate over use patterns and potential alternative options of, you know, is this the right mix of containers? Do we need more? Do we left? A bigger conversation about what our need is and such would have been welcome. And I'm unsure of how exactly we want, it would be best to share that disappointment. So I'll just, I'll just state it right here, right now, that I'm, it's frustrating to hear that effective very soon, we will need to make this decision or that our residents, both residents in the county who still use these facilities as well as the city, will be suddenly shifted entirely over onto the city's dime. So I would be interested to understand how we can best not have a sort of issue. So if there's a joint, if it's a joint committee or something for, and dealing with solid waste, that would be something I'd be interested in understanding a little better. But nonetheless, I'm, I think that these are really well-used facilities. We use them all the time. And we happen to use the one over on Octave Street because, of course, it's a short walk from our house. So it's easy enough to bring it over there. But we certainly use the other facilities in the past and they are very heavily used. So I'm not interested in letting these things go away, but I would be interested in a conversation about what the, just like any other public facility, where would be the right locations for these facilities? How are they, what are the best practices for making sure that they're used properly? And without, if there's any way of minimizing the dumping based on location or surrounding environment, et cetera. So I'd be interested in understanding what our long-term plan is as well. And I think that was one of the messages I heard out of this presentation, was let's plan for the future, not just for the present, for right now. I'm not interested in letting those facilities close if we can avoid it. Very interested in understanding our, better our partnership with the county and interested in our planning forward. So I guess no real questions, just comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Rebecca Francic here again. I think you hit the nail right on the head. If we had an ongoing robust SWAC up and running, I don't think this would have been a surprise. There would have been a long-term plan. But the fact that we don't have one at this point in time leads to surprises like this. And Basin is certainly willing to work with the city if you want to go forward. But the county has indicated that their budget will not accommodate these anymore.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your very insightful comments. City manager, how would we proceed with this? Do you have one more comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to, one quick comment here, I guess a question. Mrs. Francic, you indicated if we had a SWAC, that things could or could be different. Can you speak through that exactly? Again, what that partnership would look like with the county? I guess, and obviously, it's an advisory committee. So they might advise on policy much as some of the other commissions do for the city. I guess, just kind of talk through what a SWAC looks like and how we might better inform ourselves on these types of events. Because as Councilman Maloney indicated or said, I'm not thrilled that it seems like we're getting this last-minute presentation that's going to be, you know, increasing costs for our citizens or losing something on a unilateral decision from the county. You know, did they, did we miss something in one of their board meetings? Is there evidence of discussion? Can you help fill us in? Maybe that's more important than the SWAC question because that's kind of guessing at what the role would be.
Well, actually, Rebecca Francic again. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Actually, the SWAC is at the heart of this. Currently, we are supposed to have a SWAC that is updated every five years and ours is now out of date. When you have legislation coming down from Washington State, you should be looking at what that legislation is and making sure that you are able to meet it. You need to be looking at what your long-term needs are for garbage and for recycling. And you should have members from each of your community, which the county commissioners then appoint. And you should be meeting pretty much on a monthly basis because it should be tied directly to your comprehensive plan. As you look at where your development is and how intense your development is, you really need to be making plans for how you want your garbage and your recycling to be taken care of and how it's going to be paid for. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess the second part of the question was whether or not BDI has some type of record of discussion with the county, whether it's in the county meeting minutes. You know, unfortunately, those happen during the day and most of us are working, so we're not able to attend those. But again, is there evidence of discussion of the county cutting this program that we were uninformed of?
I have been working with Sally McKenzie, who is in charge of the county SWAC. And she is the person who works with ecology and receives ecology funding for recycling. And I just advised her that we were not receiving the payments that we needed to cover the costs. At one point in time, when there was a market for recycling, the cost was not so high. But as the cost has dropped lower and lower and then become nonexistent, what's happened is now it costs a hundred and fifty-four, or a hundred and fifty dollars a ton to dispose of this recycling material. And that has, that is what really has kind of exceeded their budget. So I've been talking to her, I think, since Christmas. There is no meeting, as I know, with the county commissioners. I have not talked with them directly.
Okay, I appreciate that and I think I've asked plenty of questions here. Hopefully, we can get ahead of it next time or if it's going next time. So I appreciate your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Serrano. Go ahead, City Manager.
So, good evening, Mayor Council again. And I will kind of just chat about the SWAC for a second. This is a committee made up of, from their website, this is a committee made up of each city in the county, Department of Ecology, the Health District, refuse haulers and recycling companies, as well as citizen participation. They are supposed to meet on a regular basis. I am not aware of active SWAC. So, I mean, to answer the one question that was up. And then I think the other piece, and I think that is something that we've kind of had a few discussions on over the past few years, though I think it's probably been two or three years since the issue came up. And that's the solid waste management plan. And that's something, I want to say it's about every ten years that's supposed to be updated or every eight years. But the last update was 2010. And so that's what's on the county website. I took a brief look at it just a few minutes ago while we're discussing the issue. But I know that's kind of been at issue with some of the haulers. And it's been a topic of conversation between myself and the county administrator a few times. It is their goal to start that process up. And when I talked to him several months ago, his thinking was the SWAC would start up and they would start that process sometime this year. So I would just say that probably hold on for that process. And as council has pointed out, or a number of you pointed out, this has been somewhat frustrating for staff as well. We're in the process of trying to work with county staff to learn a little bit more about the decision. We've actually learned a little bit more information tonight. As a matter of fact, we initially learned that the county made this decision from BDI. So we will continue to work with BDI and the county, work through this. I realize the, right now, the cost of those being picked up, the recycling bins being picked up, it appears is probably coming from BDI if the county's not paying their bill to BDI. So we reckon- So, we recognize that time is an issue here, and we'll be moving forward with those conversations and get something back within the next week or two to council.
Thank you. So, do we want to add this to our workshop meeting? Or do we want to wait until?
I would ask that we, give us a week or two to see what progress we can make with county officials, staff over there, as well as BDI officials, and then we can come back with something a little more fleshed out in terms of what kind of resources are coming into the county. You know, my understanding is, and Ms. Francic confirmed tonight, they do receive recycling funds from Department of Ecology. Want to learn a little bit more about what those are, how much they are. Maybe this is a shared cost, and I guess I'd throw out that because something got annexed into the city limits, doesn't necessarily mean only city residents are using it. So, you know, it may make some sense to utilize those dollars that they're getting for, the county is receiving from ecology, and if not, I think it would be somewhat interesting and informative for the city council to understand if they're not going to use those dollars for recycling, what are they going to use them for if they're for recycling?
Perfect.
A few questions out there.
Yes, definitely. Okay, so we will revisit this item. With that, we move on to item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Go ahead.
I did have just a couple items. I wanted to make council aware that we're currently in the process of finalizing an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Benton Franklin Health District to provide for vaccinations at the CBC testing site, so that'll expand services there. I don't have details on that right now, but you should have an agreement to consider it at your next meeting, your next regular meeting. And more to come on the specific details. And I would also note, I was on the website earlier today, where our case rates hovering around the mid-one-eighties. We were down in the one-seventies last week, but one-eighty-four per one-thousand population is where we were for Franklin County. That's important because two-hundred is the metric we need to stay under, two-hundred cases per one-hundred thousand to remain in Phase Three. That's one of the key metrics, so. Not a comfortable margin, but we've steadily been below that margin now for a couple weeks in that mid-one-eighty to low-one-eighty range. And then I also wanted to just talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And as I've shared with council previously via email and some other conversations, cities slated to receive eighteen-point-four million dollars. We'll see those dollars start to come in in about mid-May, I think May tenth, and lagging behind that, and it did last time as well, is the specifics about eligibility. I do understand, and want to share with council, that I think the American Rescue Plan Act is more flexible than what we saw with some of the CARES money. We just don't have those regulations yet and what those limits are, but as I mentioned, we'll be receiving eighteen-point-four million. We'll get half of that in May, and then we'll get a second half approximately six months later. And then we have about two years to use those dollars, two years after receipt. And as I shared with council previously, a number of things, I think the flexibility's there where you'd have a number of options to be able to use those dollars. My sense and my recommendation is that we have, you know, it's a lot of dollars compared to our CIP plan or what the city spends in capital dollars in any given year. It's not a huge number of dollars, but for dollars just coming to us from the federal government, it's a pretty good size allocation, and I think we need a fairly robust public process to help guide the council and provide suggestions in terms of developing a more comprehensive plan. Staff is certainly looking at opportunities for some capital projects council may want to consider. I think the limiting factor, again, is the time. I mean, we do, for a capital project, often you have to go through architecture, design, or engineering design, in the case of an infrastructure project. And so, that's going to limit probably where we could spend those dollars in terms of what type of project or where that project may be in the planning phase. So, wanted to share that with council, particularly if there's other dollars depending, if it's going to be matching other dollars, that could prove problematic, and we might miss our timeline if the project's not far enough along. So, just some things to consider. We'll have a more comprehensive discussion about it at your workshop next week, and where we'll chat a little bit about options, timelines on where we might have more specifics on regulations, and then at least the beginnings of a public outreach process.
Perfect, sounds good. Any comments from any of our council members or miscellaneous discussion? With that, we move on to item thirteen, executive session. No need for an executive session this evening. And with that, we adjourn. Council meeting has, is done. We're done for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for showing up and for the presentations. Have a good evening.